Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Simsbury Board of Education. Today is Tuesday, February 24th, 2015. And with that, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on to Board and Administrative Communications. And we have Mallory Barnard here with us this evening, and she is our student rep on the board. Welcome, Mallory. Haven't seen you in a while.
Thank you.
Or we have seen you maybe in the audience, but glad that you're here, here at the table with us.
It's great to be back, and I'm excited to work with everyone for the rest of the school year. Right now at the high school, it's in the heart of third quarter, so everyone's really busy with schoolwork, SATs coming up, things like that. The winter sports seasons are wrapping up. Many teams had recent senior nights, as well as they're about to compete in many state tournaments. And the wrestling team actually competed this past weekend and did really well. Two wrestlers came away with state championships, and so congratulations to them.
That's great.
Also, this past Friday was Battle of the Bands, which is always a very popular and well-attended event. And for the second year in a row now, the band Paper Radio won. But congratulations to everyone, because there was good competition.
That's great.
And this Thursday, Unified Theater is putting on their performance at 5:00, and it's always a good show to see. And lastly, National Honor Society is holding their second blood drive of the school year on March 9th. So hopefully that goes as well as the last one did.
Great. Very good. Thank you. Susan?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
All righty. And we have our new board member here, but I will talk, discuss you later, going on too. In my piece of it. Welcome, welcome, Tom.
Thank you.
Todd?
I'm glad Mallory said something about Unified Theater. I was going to mention that 5:00 Thursday, it's always terrific, terrific show.
Great. Good, good. What is the name of the play?
I'm not sure, actually.
It's got a theme, like it's Rock Star.
That's great. Good. On my calendar. Michael?
I just welcome Tom to the Board of Ed, and other than that, I'm all set.
Thank you.
Terrell?
I'll welcome Tom and Todd as well. I want to make a thank you out to all of our staff who are keeping us clean and keeping our playground, keeping our parking lots cleared and our sidewalks cleared and safe, because you can get into any school without slipping and sliding, and it's quite amazing, because you really can't get into my house that way. We're very, we're very lucky. And my sister was in town and just said, it was just, the town is amazing at how well they're taking care of all of the snow that we're getting. So I want to thank everyone who does that. I also want to mention, I was at, Erin had the Kathleen McGowan in Educational Enhancement Foundation meeting, steering meeting, last week, and it was spectacular. We've got an unbelievable group of people who are working together on this. We're going to bring more to the board, I think, at the March 10th meeting. And we're going to talk about scholarships that are going to go out to this, these graduating seniors, and hopefully, and our Teacher of the Year, and hopefully we'll have some ideas about grants that can go out to teachers and schools that need them as time goes on. It's very, it's wonderful.
It'll be exciting to hear the presentation.
Yeah. There's a lot of good work going on.
Okay. Erin?
I just wanted to draw your attention to a flyer that's in your folder around, I had mentioned previously that we had applied for a $10,000 grant, an assessment reduction grant, and we actually received it. And you can get the press release from the state and all of the various towns that did receive money. So I'm spearheading that with Betsy Gonzalez. We have about 32 people around the district, kindergarten through 12th grade, teachers, teacher leaders and administrators that will participate on a Simsbury Assessment Think Tank. And so we have three meetings, one in March, one in April, and one in May. And when we get some findings, and I'll continue to update the board on what we're doing. So monies need to be expended by the end of June, and we can hold some monies for some summer work as well. But we're pretty excited to look at our assessment practices, to see what we truly think are informing our instructional practices and making a difference in our curriculum and our work that we do in our classrooms. So more on that.
Very good, very good. And on the backside is also the list of the winning districts.
Correct.
So it's glad to know that we're one of the 48.
Correct.
That are being awarded. All righty, good news.
And thank you to Martha Hogan for really helping us pull that grant together.
Yes. Susan?
Nothing this evening.
All right. Burke?
Yeah, a couple of project updates from your last meeting. You recall the Henry James Main Office and Squadron Line Main Office project plans and cost estimates that you had given your yes to, the first of two boards that needed to give us the green light. And the Public Building Committee on the 11th also approved the plans and specifications. So now we're preparing for the state planning, planned completion test meetings, March 3rd and 4th for both the projects. That's the next major hurdle. The architects will be making those presentations. I'll be at those meetings on behalf of the board. And there was, since your last meeting, there was some additional hazardous materials testing that was performed, a second round on both projects. And based on the cost estimates for the Henry James Project, where there was some additional remediation earlier this evening, I just came from the Board of Finance meeting, and they gave approval for an additional $200,000 for the Henry James Project, which would give us a good level of contingency and the ability to do that abatement work. So that was a very important step. We do feel that on the Squadron Line Project, we'll probably be roughly $200,000 over budget. We're keeping our fingers crossed. It's, you know, you don't know until the final bids come in. So that, that's a quick update on those two projects. Once we get the meetings with the state behind us, we'll be looking for approval to go out to bid later in March. Again, we're looking for summer, for summer construction. So that was a very helpful vote from the Board of Finance earlier, earlier tonight. And that's all I've got.
Okay. Good, keeping us up to date on our construction projects.
Absolutely.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes, one thing. Kristin, I don't mean to call you out, but I just, somebody who I hope becomes a familiar face. This is Kristin Stoller. She's the reporter for the Hartford Current, assigned to our area, and you cover Farmington as well, correct? All right. So Kristin just recently did a wonderful story, which I know you all read on Matt Spector, and I just, it was in the Sunday Current. Great story about the work he's doing with our special education students at Simsbury High School, and definitely somebody to celebrate. So thank you for writing that story, and I was going to bring that up as a, as a share as well, just about the great work of the teachers that we have in our district. And it was a great reminder of the talent that we have here and the impact that they have on kids.
That's good.
Yep.
Very good. And my turn. And thank you again, Kristin, while you have the floor on that story. I did get a lot of comments and emails and calls and texts about the story, so it's really great. He really is an exceptional teacher.
Absolutely.
And that's how we like to celebrate our successes in our school district, and starting with our students, but also with our teachers. So thank you again. We look forward to more stories like that. And then on to Mr. Frank. Welcome to Simsbury Board of Education. This is Tom Frank, who is our newest member of Simsbury Board of Education. He is replacing Chris Kelly, who, as you know, has now been voted in the Board of Selectmen, and Tom is filling the expired term, unexpired term of Chris Kelly. So he was recently sworn in this morning, I believe, correct?
Correct.
Downstairs, and, and here you are. So Tom has been a frequent visitor here in the audience and, you know, watching us very carefully, and so jumping in with a little bit of knowledge of who we are and what we do. So we hope you enjoy your tenure with us, and you come at a great time, budget time, and welcome.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to serve on this board, and I'm very excited about what the opportunity that's been given to me. And I hope that, based on my background in business and my background in education, I can contribute something of value to, to the board and to the, to the district, and especially to the students.
Good.
Thank you, Tom.
Good, good. Thank you. So, and just briefly, as you know, the governor unveiled his budget last week, and it's been all over in the, in the media. And right now, we are knee-deep and thick with hearings going on and testimonies before Appropriations Committee and before Education Committee. So I will be representing CAE before both committees on, on some of the education bills and funding. So it will be, again, a very interesting, interesting legislative tenure time that we'll be facing again. A lot of the familiar bills and faces will be resurfacing again, but we are up there to fight the fight for public education. So, you know, hopefully the budget will be passed, it should be passed by June 3rd. So more, more to come, continued excitement up at the LOB. All right, moving on with that, we have recommended actions in your packet. We have Exhibit 1, approval of minutes of the February 10th, 2015 meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Some of it.
Thank you. Second?
Second, whoever.
Whoever.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion passes. Thank you. We are now on Exhibit 2, adoption of the 2015-2016 non-public school budget. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion?
Todd just moved it. Todd just.
Thank you, thank you. Wow, I guess we're all waiting for the public school budget.
I second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion passes. Thank you. We are now on to Exhibit 3 in your packet, discussion and possible action of the 2015-2016 public school budget. So I hope that's waking everybody up.
There you go. Thank you, Lydia. Just to kind of overview what we would like to do this evening, I have a couple slides just to provide some context to the overall budget increase request. And Burke will be handing out an updated revenue sheet, and we'd like to also go through some of the line item detail of the budget, just to see if anybody has questions. And what we'll do is speak to the points in that line item budget that match up with that main driver sheet, particularly the increases, to refamiliarize you with those. From there, I have the reduction list. I have a list that our administration has put together at the request of the board that would demonstrate what it would take, basically, in reductions to get to a 1.7. From there, we can, can have any discussion and move forward, hopefully with the approval of the budget. So to paint some context to it, I know that we were all a little bit on pins and needles as the governor was getting ready to present his budget, and as we were thinking last time about potential scenarios we may need to demonstrate if there was any kind of decrease projected in what our educational cost share funding would be. That funding is going to be stable, which is very good news, I think, for us, for the town in the planning process. Gives us a bit of an understanding of where the governor is going, what he, how he views education with desire to really keep the funding that we have a stable situation. And we know in the past that a lot of the scenarios we have demonstrated to the Board of Finance and talked about have been a result of uncertainties in where the governor's budget would show and how that would play out. So Burke, if you could pop the first slide up there on the board, I believe people have a handout of this as well. This is information we put together on an annual basis, but I wanted to demonstrate two things. What surrounding superintendents have put forward to their boards relative to a budget increase, which is what this first slide demonstrates. Each bar graph is a separate, a separate town. We were able to collect data on 96, or 94, rather, reporting districts, and you can see in red, our 2.47 is really in the bottom third of the districts. So the point, of course, when we framed the budget presentation at last meeting, we believe we've brought forward to this board a conservative or responsible budget presentation, an overall increase that moves the district forward, and is also really fiscally responsible. And just wanted to show how that number that we present in isolation plays out when we compare it to what other superintendents have proposed. We also recognize it's part of a process, so the number that superintendents propose is not always the number that a Board of Ed approves. But we also wanted to show the data we were able to collect, and it's on the second slide, Burke, thanks, that demonstrates what Board of Ed data is out there available to look at in terms of approved Board of Education budgets. And you can say we're, see we're able to collect data on 55 districts, and our 2.47, while I recognize not approved by the Board of Education at this point, is a responsible budget in terms of how it plays out in, in the state. And among, I know we do not have individual districts listed, I have background information with them, but across our DIRG, in comparative districts such as Farmington, Canton, and so forth, is a very responsible number that we have put forward. So just wanted to kind of, before we get into the nitty-gritty of line items, provide more of a contextual overview of what that 2.47 increase looks like when we compare it to other towns.
So we're in the ballpark with the rest of the people in our DIRG? Is that what you're saying, basically?
We are. We have, I know that Avon did move forward a budget of 1.3% increase. Outside of that, I have not seen another district within our DIRG that's below a 2.47.
Okay.
You know, not that I want to compare apples to apples with Avon all the time, but we were at a 1% last, last year, and they were closer to 3, so.
And Avon in the past several years has also come in.
Much higher.
Much higher.
Oh, I know that. That's why I was just curious.
Yep.
Because I kind of didn't expect that.
Yep.
Without really the other one.
So the next piece, I think, is important, as we talked about the governor holding educational cost share funding status quo for Simsbury, as Burke will hand out, or do they have it in their folder?
You have in your packet a tab for revenue projections.
Right.
And I would put that adjacent to your grants, which is probably towards the back of your binder. So these are the two components that, when we get to the, to the more involved line item budget that you'll get prior to the next Board of Finance presentation. These are the so-called pink pages. So these, these, we always color these revenues and grants in the pink section of the budget. These are exactly the same without that coloration. And if you go to that sheet, this is, I believe, the third or fourth budget where we're starting with the, the concept of the gross budget and working our way back to the net budget that the taxpayers see. So the, the grants plus other operating funds is, is what this top line helps you to see. And then when you subtract out the grants that we reviewed previously, that are about 3.4 million, we get the superintendent's proposed budget of 67, 221, 317. Working down from there is where you get the estimated revenues. And these are revenues that are related to education, but they go to the town of Simsbury, not directly to us. And you see our estimates for next year, we have generally flat or slightly higher estimates for tuition from students that are outside of the district, for rental of school buildings. But the largest, by far, source of revenue that the town receives from the state is the ECS, or education cost sharing. And we're showing that based on the governor's budget at a level funded $5,633,072. There's two other smaller grants that are part of the governor's budget that go to the town. Those are the elementary, secondary transportation at $42,000. We're showing that up just $100, $150, roughly. And adult education, we're showing flat at $10,000. So that's, as Matt stated earlier, that was a real relief to see at least this as the starting point. We had heard rumors that, that towns may not be held, held harmless. I think there's still some details of the governor's budget that are being reviewed and discussed, so I know this is not the end of the process. The second page gives you, that handle just gives you a little bit more background about, about what the types of funding sources are and the statutes that mandate some of those costs. Any questions on the revenue?
Good. All right.
And then we've got some positive news there as a starting point.
We'll just move to line item.
Okay, so line item summary. Now, I have, I have a few extras if anybody needs one, but you should have a budget summary tab in your binder. Does anybody need an update?
This is where Burke tests us to see if we put everything in the right place.
Absolutely. That's right.
A few extras.
Got my whole thing open here.
We just wanted to go back over the line items, and there's a colored handout that's in your packet, and we're going to use that to help explain our equipment line item budget.
Tom? Tom? Tom?
Yeah, he's going.
So there are several major categories that we're going to walk through in the line item budget. I think Matt and I are going to share this a little bit, correct?
Sure.
And looking at this line item summary, it just allows you to see the increase or decrease to these, to these major line items. And the first section, known as the general control section, sort of district-wide expenses, we're showing no increases there. And the next major group is the instructional group, and that really is by far the, the largest portion or group within our budget at roughly $40, $40.5 million proposed for 15, 16, in addition to salaries, which is the bulk of it. There are also supplies and textbooks and things of that nature. And we wanted to, to just walk through this a bit. Matt, did you want to start, or do you want me to start off?
Go ahead. I think you were just going to hit really on the software licensing and.
Sure. You've seen in prior, prior workshops and our, our major drivers, you know, that we have contractual salary obligations for most of our unions, and starting down on the educational software and licensing line, if you see that, an increase of $15,000, and an operational software licensing increase of 65. So you had seen that in a prior workshop meeting as a total of $80,000. So we're just going to break those down. You, you had in that prior presentation that the educational software is a growing portion of our instructional budgets. So we're trying to make sure that we can support the uses that are expanding in various classroom levels for software licensing of an instructional nature. But the one that we wanted to, to highlight a bit more, is it's a more significant increase, is the operational software and licensing budgets. You may recall us talking about that at that workshop. Currently, we pay for the online parent registration software, or InfoSnap, that was added last, last year. We also pay for all of our Microsoft campus licensing for all of our computers within the district. There's a lump sum campus license there, that's about $35,000. And we also pay for our school, Connect's automated school calling system, and we pay for what's called VMware licenses, which is part of our virtualization project, so there's an annual licensing. Our current licensing is 500. Next year, for the first time, we'll be adding 300 more licenses. So part of the, part of the additional increase of about $65,000 is going to be for adding VMware licenses. Part of it is for a new software for the IT department to track repair requests. We're excited about that. We've done some visits to other districts, and West Hartford is using, using this software. It's known as School Dude. There's a municipal version called Facility Dude. It's actually a very popular software, and, you know, recent surveys of, of other districts across the country are, are using it, but definitely within, within our state. Also, we have costs for replacement of the online meal pay system, the so-called Horizon Fast Lane that, that our nutrition services program runs on. We need, they don't, they won't be supporting the version that we, that we had since the introduction of that. And so there is a new system that we're proposing to, to work with. And lastly, we have some improvements to the district website that would allow better overall layout and also better use of our website if you're on a mobile device. So that, that is the, the background for that. Any questions on that before I move on?
The, the next piece on the, I think it is the next page, is the 0500 series pupil transportation services. Wanted to bring your attention to one item, it's contracted services, with an increase, an overall increase of $115,000. And go back and revisit what kind of two items make up that pretty substantial increase. One is an earlier presentation that Neil's here tonight, that Neil and Dane made relative to athletics, and, and discussion of where we are with our athletic budgeting and forecasting with the pay-for-play model in lieu of declining enrollment, and what that kind of shortfall looks like over time. We have taken $100,000 of what was prior covered, I mean, not all of it covered, there was a deficit, but covered by pay-for-play, and assume that in the operating budget in the transportation line item. So the overall estimate of transportation for athletics is about $100,000. We would cover that in the operating cost. The additional, that's about $90,000, rather, the additional 25 is increased transportation cost for out-of-district tuitions that we incurred. So it's really truing up that transportation line item between athletics and between special education. Burke, the other biggie, if, I don't want to jump around, but I think is, is worth really talking about, and I think we can just take questions after that, is the equipment. So I know we have both how the equipment plays out in our 0700 line item and our 1200 line item, and Burke has kind of a proposed new way to look at that, that I think allows us to look at what we presented in the budget and see how it ties into the line items in a much neater way. So I'll kick it back to you.
So, so you have a, you have a colored handout that helps, that helps to focus on what has been always probably the most confusing part of this line item summary. And that is that we have instructional and non-instructional equipment replacement in the maintenance of plant or 0700 group. And then we have new equipment, instructional and non-instructional, in the 1200 group. So I've highlighted that in green on your handout on that, showing how we, how we currently have multiple line items for those. For technology, which is coded in yellow, we have replacement equipment, which was actually a recent add to our line items to try to be in line with our, our need to, to start replacing the new equipment that we purchased in the late 2006, 2008 era, and also the, the new instructional tech items. So what we're trying to show here is essentially a before and, and after. As we saw in our major drivers, and we gave you handouts at your workshop, we're really looking at an increase for the technology of $111,000. So this is showing at the, at the bottom that if you combined replacement as well as new spending, historically, last year, we spent $382,520, and we're looking to increase that to 100, by $111,000 to 493,520, if you're all following me, the, the last line on that bottom there. So we, we would propose to, you know, make it much clearer that on a tech basis, it's not as important as to whether or not it's something we already have, or we're buying a new, a new device. The point is, we have to take care of, of both the, the replacement of existing, as well as make sure we have enough for our students. The other four line items that are in, that are in green, we're showing that in this year's budget, we're proposing $125,000 increase in total. Historically, we showed you going back six or seven years that we had averaged close to $300,000 in these various lines. Last year, we cut it by $70,000, so we were really trying to kind of get back some of what we lost last year. And we're also hoping to make a change from the administration of this, where each K-12 department or each building would essentially not have to, not have to be working from these small budgets. We would just be given one line item and one amount to manage to. We have not had a historical base here, so we've, each, each and every year, we've just said, what do you need? And then we've matched up the exact. And then we've matched up the exact dollar amount of each of those items. It's been very tedious for the business office to try to manage that. We'd like to do what we do with, with other supply items where they, they know that this is what they have for instructional supplies and they need to manage within that. They'd still give us all of the detail of their requests, and the hard part would be basically, you know, saying to them, this is what we can give you, and you have to prioritize within that. The goal here is that it will not be so difficult to say, what do we spend on equipment? We'll see it very, very clearly. You see the difference year over year, and then all of the detail is still a part of our process. But that's what we would propose to make this line item summary a little bit more clear.
Comments?
Good idea.
Yeah.
Cleans it up a little bit.
It does.
Matches really the presentation that we...
It's more important, yeah.
So, yeah, as we, as we go through that major driver slide of Matt's presentation now, it's much easier to follow where we're, where we're getting those increases. So that essentially would move everything from group seven to group twelve now.
Right.
Going, going forward. And we would, and we would make this change by the time we print up the version that goes to the, to the public hearing.
Makes sense.
And it provides the historical context too, when we're talking to the Board of Finance about the new format. Any questions on any of that, any of the information?
Is that the end of the, the review of the line items, or is there more that will be discussed?
That's the end.
Okay. I have, I have four questions. The only thing we didn't cover, Matt, was just the, I think, the insurance and the out-of-district part.
All right. Why don't you, why don't you talk about the insurance real quick? And then we'll get your questions done.
Just highlighting that from our major drivers, we're down on the, on the defined benefit pension plan. Actuarial required contribution is down about a hundred and sixteen thousand. Our defined contribution plan, which is our newest plan, is, is up slightly. So the net is about a hundred thousand dollars decrease, and this was made, made possible due to collective bargaining as, as a significant factor, that now the employee is paying more of the contribution to their, to their defined benefit plan, for those employees that are in the defined benefit plan. For newer hires, defined contribution plan is just the employer putting money in, and there's no employee contribution. The second item there under insurance for employee insurance includes health insurance. It also includes other smaller items. That is, as, as Matt said in, in his budget presentation on the tenth, that is assuming that we're going to be able to, to benefit three hundred thousand to our operating budget for health insurance, and we're going to see some lower rates for next year based on the level of reserves and our, and our positive experience and our self-insurance pool. We're working in conjunction with the Board of Selectments Office and the town in terms of assuming those improvements in our overall health, health rates. And lastly, on the very last page, outgoing transfer accounts, as you recall from our earlier special education presentations, we're looking to be up two hundred and twenty-five thousand for out-of-district tuitions. Matt mentioned earlier that twenty-five thousand was for transportation, and that major driver was two hundred and fifty thousand. So those are the, some of the largest ones, and we're open to questions that you have.
A general question, in terms of interpreting these variances, is it fair to say that these variances for budget this year compared to budget last year would be the same as budget this year versus estimated actual, I'm sorry, budget next year for estimated actual this year?
I'm not sure if I, could you just repeat that? You're saying variance-wise from...
These variances are comparing the budget proposal with last year's, with the current year's budget.
Yes.
And the question is, if we were going to compare the budget for next year with estimated actual for the current year, would the variances be approximately the same?
Yes. I mean, it's, it's helpful to, in our, in our presentation, this, this line item summary just shows budget over, over budget. I think what you're referring to is that...
Basically, it says, are there going to be any big variances versus, versus budget this year that would knock these comparisons out of...
There's, there's no major, there's no major variances, but, but in terms of, I think what you're looking to analyze is when you get this budget that has, it will show projections for the rest of this year as well as actuals from the prior year. I think that's going to get into that question where you will, you will be able to then review it and, and ask if you see any other concerns.
Okay, thank you. The second question has to do with the general, general control and the health services budget, which aren't huge, but there are significant budgets. And, and I know, like everybody else, that the budget this year for next year is identical to the current year budget for many, many line items. And could you explain that, that particular budgeting philosophy?
Okay. I guess the, the, the general philosophy here has been that we're managing to one bottom line, and the goal has been to try to make each group as accurate as possible. When I started in this position about three years ago or so, there were, there were areas here where we had, we had gotten out of, out of, out of bounds. In, in total, we make sure to manage to that bottom line. I think what we're seeing is we've got, we've got a pretty good handle on these groups that, such as the general control and the health, health services. They don't tend to have as much variation. So I think we're now at a comfortable level. We're not going to show a thousand dollar increase. If we happen to go over, that's, that's not going to be something that we come back the next year and say, oh, we've got to, we've got to adjust that. There's a much greater degree of variance, I think, to your, to your earlier question on some of the other larger accounts, such as the, the teaching staff, the, the supplies, the utilities, things like that.
But it, but it, for example, salaries, which is the biggest component of, of these, these overhead accounts, if you will, shows no salary increases. And if the member of the public said, no salary increases for staff?
So the answer to that is that...
Those are unnegotiated contracts.
We have a reserve for unnegotiated salaries. It's just the fifteen-hundred group. So that total amount will be for the unaffiliated folks. We don't have a, a known contractual increase. So that's part of the, that's part of the reason for that right now.
Another topic that often comes under discussion is utilities. Showing no increase in, no increase or decrease in heating or electricity. Is that in fact a, a budgeting assumption that, that we are making, that we do not expect any change in utility expense for our district next year compared to this year?
We, we certainly have the most fluctuation in these accounts from year, from year to year. And you're right. We don't, we don't expect it to be an unchanged item. I would say that is one of the, the most difficult areas to project for. We've tended to have reasonable cushion in these, in these areas, which is what's allowed us to help to deal with unanticipated areas, such as the out-of-district tuition.
Well, that relates to the last question then. And excuse me for delaying the conversation. But the last question is reserved for contingencies. Normally, in budgeting processes that I've personally been associated with, I normally would build reserves for contingencies, unanticipated problems into the budget. And I'm just wondering if in fact there are reserves for unanticipated problems that are baked into this budget, or does everything have to go perfectly in order for us to, to, to spend to this budget?
No, I, I would say that the, the areas of utilities and some of our repair accounts, those are the hardest to estimate. So there is some level of cushion there because we can't predict everything that's going to happen with failures of our, of our, you know, water, water tank at the high school or HVAC system. So there is some, some level of cushion in those maintenance accounts.
The other piece for contingency, really relative to special education, is our IDA grant funding, which is a two-year grant you receive every year. So there's overlay in that grant. So some flexibility there. And that is historically how we have dealt with any increase or unanticipated cost in outplacement. Due to a major shortfall in that area last year, we've really, for lack of a better term, chewed that up.
Go ahead.
So, you know, that's, that's something we need to look at because we have, to your point, things are getting closer to have to fall perfect, to fall within this budget. And that's an area of particular concern, which is why you see that funding request for two hundred and fifty thousand additional in outplacement cost to hopefully restore some of that flexibility within the grant.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
No else? All righty.
Okay. The last item I want to take a few minutes and go through, again, the board requested at the end and during the conversation, when I proposed the budget of the two-point-four-seven, was what it would look like to take that number and move it to a one-point-seven. And the reason we, I believe that question was asked is because while the Board of Finance has not put a, put a hard guideline in place, they referenced a little bit of the cost of living increase, which is about a one-point-seven. And we know historically, as we go through the process, and we will present to the Board of Finance in March, that they may ask to see various scenarios. This is something that we've, we've done before. So I thought it would be important as we go through to kind of show this board what that would look like. And I know I framed that conversation, and I know that any movement at this point is really going to be personnel-related because the reality is, last year, Burke referenced the equipment, we know what we did with some insurance collaboration with the town last year, and we've really looked at other creative, kind of non-personnel accounts for savings. And we know that to continue to go back to the technology line item or the equipment line item and erode those line items is not best practice either as we move forward. So I would certainly say that this was, it's a difficult process, and I don't want to harbor on that. I know that this board appreciates that. When we look at these positions and we start to talk about places where we would, we would make reductions, these are all, I do want to say, positions that we value. This isn't any indication by me that I feel that we should make these reductions. This is just the reality that if we need to go through different areas to look for cost savings to the bottom line, these are areas that we would go. It's kind of in a semi-priority order, but if there were any decisions to be made, I would ask for the autonomy to go back with my team and, and think about any final decisions. But let me go through kind of globally where we are with these things and certainly open it up to questions by the board. But certainly in framing my perspective and where I'm at, so you, so you know that I'm clear, you know, we presented the two-point-four-seven. The governors come out with a pretty stable look at, at what our educational cost share funding looks like. Seeing the comparatives in other districts, I mean, I'm feeling pretty good that the two-point-four-seven, while it may not be a perfect number, really gets us where we need in lieu of the fact that we've been below two for the past six to seven years. So with that being said, the first position that we have down there for reference is a, it's a tutoring position. It's close to a full FTE. And really, the rationale for putting this position on the list is that we have a separate budget request for Terrafill School to increase their special education staffing by a half of an FTE. And as you'll remember, Terrafill has one special education teacher covering seven grades. So just the ability to cover and get to the places and really support teachers and support students has, has gotten extremely challenging. So some of those, that flexibility and that work is done right now by a tutor, which we feel would be supplanted by, by the FTE request. What the reduction of this does, I guess to Tom's point, a little bit on the personnel side, is you don't have any built-in contingency if you have a student move into the district with a special ed need and have to, have to react to that. And we know that we're responsible for any IEPs that come to us, and a lot of times those individual plans reference the fact that children have access to either tutors or paraprofessionals. So it's an area that's gotten more challenging over time as we've made reductions in those areas. The next item is secretarial FTE. We would, we've, we'll take a hard look, if we have to, at our overall support staff. Certainly, one of the challenges there is we know administrative demands have grown much more intense on our building-based administrators, thus those demands on their support staff to really organize and respond and do the best job they can do. So I mean, any reduction here, we see a negative impact relative to, you know, potentially how we respond to our different stakeholders, both internal and external. And I think before, before I move on in the list, I would just want to couch this by saying, our philosophy, when we looked at, at these potential reductions as an administrative team, was really protect the classroom teacher first, the person that's delivering the instruction to the students first, and look at other resources in the district that we do think are extremely valuable but aren't the firsthand in delivering the instruction. That's why you won't see classroom teaching positions until later, much later on in the list. The next, I'm going to lump them for sake of the conversation together, although they have different functions, and that's three through six. So that's four positions, all full-time equivalent positions. So that's four full-time FTE. So significant dollars there. And these are positions that have been, have been in the district over time or put in place more recently that are teacher leader positions. These are positions that we believe have become and are very valuable in curriculum development. And we, we all know that we've been through significant changes, K-12, with our curriculum programming, with the Common Core, and with constant revisions, changes in implementation, the pace that's created for teachers. So this is staff that really support our teachers, support the creation of our curriculum, support the implementation, and trying to create the tenability for the classroom teacher to be successful in delivering instruction to our students. So certainly, when we start to, to talk about the elimination of these positions, they have, they have an impact. They have an impact. They're valued by our staff. I would worry about that, but if we had to make hard decisions about classroom teachers versus support positions, I think it makes sense that we would first look at support positions. And you can see that there's a math elementary coordinator position, there's an elementary writing and social studies coordinator position, there's an instructional coach at the secondary level, somebody who's been really key and essential in delivering professional development and well-received. So these are resources we would certainly be struggling to see let go, but they're a layer of resources that we do have, that we talk about what really makes us a comprehensive district in, in supporting teaching and learning. It's resources like this that go a long way. When you get down to the last two items on the list, we're at a point where unfortunately we have to start talking about class size and talking about reductions overall to different staffing levels. So certainly, Neil has the most flexibility in looking at the overall size of his staff, enrollment of courses, and where we could potentially make reductions. This is making an estimation of a, a full FTE at the high school, probably would not come in one, one subject area. It would probably be various sections. But we know last year, when we presented our ten-one data to you about class size, the high school has more classes over the guidelines now than they've had in several years. So any reduction to the high school staff just kind of exacerbates that issue. But in terms of planning, the most flexibility there in options to potentially look at. The other is, I know, Mike, you had asked us to take a, a look at, you know, kind of class size and what that looks like. And I know we really took a look at the elementary level to see would there be any places that we could potentially, due to forecasted declines, squeeze a section if we had to. We did put a section on this list, a full FTE. It's a section that, it's kind of the best-case scenario of the worst in that it would bump second-grade classes up to twenty-fours to get to this FTE. When you look at few further reductions at the elementary level to that, if we had to create different scenarios, I've done that next layer in what you would end up with, our kindergartens at twenty-five, first grades at twenty-six, second grades at twenty-eight, and then upwards of twenty-eight and twenty-nine in grade three. So we're in a tough spot there in that just reducing a few FTEs really, really jolt up those numbers to numbers that we have not seen, certainly in the time in the ten years I've been at the district. Class size right now at the elementary level this year and for the last couple of years has been very well within the guidelines. has been very well within the guidelines and staffed, staffed comfortably. But we know with the middle school issues we have right now, in the request for a full-time FTE at the middle school, just removing that one FTE from the middle school would put us in the same situation of having 35 to 37 classes over the guideline, where that one FTE kind of settles that, settles that issue. So, really, the, the long and short of it is, when we talked last year about our ability to reduce 10 to 12 sections due to enrollment, we also knew we would not have that same flexibility a year out. And we talked about that. So, when we go back now and we take those hard looks, it's not favorable in terms of numbers or impact. So, all the more reason why we had other positions on the table for conversation prior to really looking at class size. So, I would open up to any, any type of conversation or questions that people have, and either I can answer them or I can turn to Sue and Erin on these particular.
Any questions from board members regarding?
I have a comment about it. Given that most of these positions already exist, at some point, it was, they were approved by this board.
Correct.
As being important enough to approve. But if, if forced by the Board of Finance to get to that lower number.
Right.
Then we would be eroding our capability that we once thought was appropriate. And I'm just wondering if, if we did that last year as well and the year before that. In other words, is this one of a series of eroding steps that we've taken? Is it a, one of a continuous series of slices off the salami, to use a metaphor my boss used?
Yeah, no, I think that's, that's a fair question. You know what, Tom, last year when we looked at the budget, and to clarify, we were able to take 10 FTE out, but what we were able to do was take teaching positions out.
Yeah.
And we had, where it just hit right, the decline in enrollment hit, we were able to keep classes within the guidelines for the most part, less the middle school, which was a bit of an anomaly in terms of new students moving in that weren't projected. So, I would say, last year in terms of staffing, no, it didn't, it didn't lead to an erosion. What we've done is kind of pull away around the personnel in terms of areas like technology, equipment, as Burke had mentioned. We did some real positive things in collaboration with the town last year on insurance consolidation that freed up about close to half a million dollars for us in savings. We were able to reduce the overall line item. But the reality is, subsequent years of very small increases have given us less places to look.
Yeah.
So, while we've gone through scenarios before that look like this, I don't believe that the scenarios, and correct me if I'm wrong, have ever been this right off the bat. You know what I mean? Before, there would be more of like, let's look at equipment a little bit, let's look in some other noneducational areas. I feel that's where this board has, has supported us in kind of chipping away and trying to be creative in those areas. And we feel any, any more movement there, we're paralyzing ourselves in a sense. You know what I mean? To continue to reduce textbooks is only going to allow us, make us come back in three years and say, we've done such a poor job in forecasting and planning that now we have to take a line item of 200,000 and move it to 400,000. But there's been a lot of conversation about the positions that are on here. You know, three years ago, we did some real thoughtful planning with the board around instructional coaches, master teachers that could come in and help our teachers work through these significant transitions in curriculum and Common Core and different teaching methodologies. So, you see this, one of these positions here.
Well, basically, I'm kind of looking for a rationale for this, because I think it's, it is inevitable.
Yep.
Based, based on sort of general knowledge of the situation, it is inevitable that the Board of Finance is not going to like this 2.47 number. And, and this board may be forced to present something of this nature.
Right.
In our conversation we had earlier today, you said a couple of things that were very impressive to me about how the, the, the level of stress that is being put on the system in here in this district as a result of the change in the testing protocol, as a result of the change in, in, in the Common Core, as a result of some behavioral pattern changes, and, and, you know, just a whole bunch of things, that there's been a buildup of, of stress level or pressure, let's put it that way, on our teachers.
Right.
This kind of stuff is designed to reduce that.
Correct.
And so that if we lose this, then we are in fact taking the position that we're willing to add stress to the front line of the educational system. And so, having said all that. I'm just wondering if any member of this board, or if you as superintendent, were asked to make a brief speech to persuade the Board of Finance that these reductions shouldn't be made, what would the nature of that speech be? What would be the, what would be the thrust of that elevator speech, if you will?
I would talk, Tom, about, you know, how you build an organization to support, in the end, high levels of student engagement and student achievement, and that these resources have been supported over time by the Board of Education. And I would talk more specifically about the impact of each of these. I mean, it's actually an exercise we go through almost on an annual basis with the Board of Finance. And, you know, this is, you know, you try to do two things. You try to talk about the current year and where you are when you're working with the Board of Finance, and you also try to forecast out a little bit about where we'll be next year. And, you know, I think we were very clear, I was as superintendent and this board was last year, that we produced a budget of a 1% increase last year, which was the lowest budget on record, and we knew we would have issues coming in at a comparable number the prior year. So, that's where, that's where we're at, we are. And, and, you know, it takes dialogue, it takes conversation, and it's something we've done on an annual basis.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Well, I'll say something that, I mean, it's funny, because erosion was, was what I was thinking of when I heard this. Not only does it, I see, kind of hurt the students, but it also, I guess to Tom's point, it adds stress to the teachers, and it could potentially dissuade good people from coming into the district.
Right.
So, it kind of starts a ball rolling down the hill. And one of the, one of the things I enjoy most on the board is when the teachers come in and they talk about some of these programs and the coaches, and how energized they are talking about how important it is to them for their professional development.
Sure.
And, you know, I don't know if five years ago before, not, I don't know, I wouldn't have, before I was on the board, you know, you don't see that they're instructors or teachers, and you think, okay, maybe that isn't as important. But when you hear the teachers come in and talk about how important it is to their growth, you realize that it's vital as, as part of, you know, what we're doing here.
Right. I think I can, I can add a little bit of this also to, to Tom, to clarify a little bit too. I've been on this board a long time. I think Mike's been on this board almost as long as me. And when we have sat through these budget, draft budget reductions from previous superintendents, before Superintendent Curtis, we've had at least, what, Mike, about three pages, four pages? And, and others can also concur, my other fellow board members. And, and Matt was right, we had textbooks, we had other, other line items that were on here, but this is really the first time that, that we were presented with, with the one page strictly with personnel, strictly with, with, with teaching staff and, and actually with coordinators. And as you look through the description here and the impact, a lot of this really revolves a lot of interventions, a lot of repositions and programs that are necessary for today for school districts. Five, five years ago, we did not have these positions in place. We also did not have, on the right side of this page, where we are today in, in the school system. So, over the years, we have incurred, you know, areas that we need to put in to other personnel positions to take care of this and, and for lack of a term, to, to help reduce, you know, the, the, the stress or what have you on the teaching staff. So, support staff, we, we think of support staff in this district as very crucial as, as a really necessary piece to moving along student achievement, moving along the district. And it is, is one area that we have fought, I know, on this board, and I think this will occur with me, we have really pushed and fought through and explained every year with Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen, the need for the different pieces of different support staff coming in. And a lot of these are also being moved by what is going on federally and also, you know, with, with statewide, with the, with the governor's budget and education. So, this was just four years ago, we sat here, you remember when we sat here when we unveiled and, you know, governor's budget and actually with, you know, the changes in the education budget, which were, which were quite new for all of us in, in terms of, of Common Core and evaluations. So, this was really something too, that was, that first year of the four-year change was quite a bit. So, this is where we are now, and these positions, you know, were probably in thought four years ago, but are actually in reality today and are so necessary to keep this piece of, of the ledger in place, and from pre-K to grade 12 and beyond.
Tom, the other thing I think is equally important in our, in our dialogue with the Board of Finance, as any rationale of potential reductions is, and they've always wanted to have open dialogue about this, is the circumstances that are leading to whatever request you're at, right, that are beyond the normal salary rollover. So, I felt the Board of Finance was pretty responsive last year to us in recognizing the, some of the unique special education costs. We had a major influx in move-ins in some of our Ready, Set, Go program, which is our early autistic program. And these are students that have a high level of need, and they demonstrate, certainly demonstrated understanding of that. But, you know, those are things you need to talk through too, not only the reductions, but how you got to the 2.47 and, and answer the questions that those board members have about the why behind any of the requests that you're moving forward. So, you know, and it's clarifying what the goals are and the why behind the goals from their end as well, you know? We had requests last year, and we had talked about this from them, and I know it picked the right word, ruffled some, some board members' feathers of what it would look like to, to go to zero and negative a half and negative one, you know? And once we clarified what the goal was, it wasn't really necessary to, to go and unveil those scenarios. And my point was, and I, and I felt like they worked with us and listened, that, you know, you put this information out there, these are people's jobs, and you're making value judgments about their jobs and having public conversations about their jobs, and if there's no real rationale or reason why you're going down to a certain number, I think we need to agree that that exercise might not be the best value for the overall school system in the town. So, I think not only is there an important piece here, but there's an education on what the request is about.
Yeah. I think for, for me, when we were talking last meeting, and I had said, you know, can we look at how long it's been since we haven't decreased equipment and textbooks? And then to see this and to realize that it is a personnel list, it clarified for me how much we've gone after all those other accounts for. This is my seventh, eighth year on here, and I think that of those years, only two budgets have not had one in front of them. Every single, every budget just about has been 1. something. And when you do that, for as long as we've done that, there is not a lot to look at anymore. When I looked at this list, it kind of reaffirmed for me that the 2.47 is probably what's best for the school system, and that our job here is not to do the Board of Finance's job, it's to do the Board of Education's job, and we put the kids first, and we give them what's right. If we have to talk to the Board of Finance about it, then we do, but that's for a discussion at their board meeting. I don't know that we, I think we've done our due diligence and done our best budget. And I think if, and I'm speaking solely for myself, if that's the case, then I think, you know, it's a conversation at the Board of Finance level. But for us, we're supposed to put forward our best budget.
All right. Any other further questions?
No questions or comments? You know, I think we've gone through six years of sub-2% increases. Most of those years were sub-1.5% increases, I believe. I'm always amazed at how efficient we spend money or the administration spends money. You know, you run the per pupil transportation costs, and we transport something in the order of 3,500 kids roughly, I would guess, a day, twice a day, so 7,000 trips a day, per pupil trip a day, $2.2 million, 180 days, so run the math. And the last time I did it, we were under a dollar per pupil per trip. So, it's pretty impressive, you know? If we could get, maybe we can get this new Connecticut Fast Track to run. It's pretty impressive, you know? We, we run very lean and, and have for, for many, many years. So, I think it's, it's a good budget. I would also point out that historically, I think it's fair to say that the board, when they asked for proposed cuts, it's not that the board's goal, and this is maybe for Tom's benefit, hasn't been for the, that the board's goal is to, to dictate to the administration which cuts they should make. It's really just tell us what it would look like. You know, again, in general, I think the board's approach to this has been, let's set the budget number, let's set the increase, let's talk with the administration about what's necessary to maintain the quality of the school system. But beyond that, we don't want to make line item, we don't want to give line item instruction to the superintendent or leadership line, you know, yes, change this by 1.0 certified FTE. We don't really want to be in that level of detail. So, it's really, this to me has always just been a way to illustrate.
Where we are.
The impact.
Yeah.
And even if we said, all right, we think you're on the right track, I don't think the plan would be to say, implement that. The plan would be to say, come in at 2.0 or whatever the number is that we chose. So, I think it's important to point out that historically, the board's role has been to stay, leave it to the education professionals, essentially. You know, I continue to be really troubled by the, our administrative cost for mandates, and I hope Tom has seen the list of mandates that we're required to comply with, because it's a huge overhead burden and has nothing to do with classroom teaching. And we should be asking our legislators every opportunity to lay off. We have a great school system. I understand if they think they need to regulate a school system that's in trouble, but we don't need that kind of regulation. And it irritates the daylights out of me that we get, we're burdened with the number of reports and, and policies and procedures that we are. You know, my plan is to, to support the budget, and I would vote for the 2.47. I would also, though, point out that while it's certainly our role as a Board of Ed member to be the representative of the taxpayers and the students and the board, as you'd expect any board of directors, to, to help guide leadership on how to do, to, to do things at a very high level. I think the, and Susan does say right, that our primary goal is to, to do what's best for the students. At the same time, I think the, one of the things that's always impressed me about the board is that we have this realistic view of way, of working with the Board of Finance that let's protect the interests of the students first and foremost, and then let's, but let's not forget that we have to find a balance. We can't just spend willy-nilly and not be realistic about what it is that the taxpayers can afford to contribute. The, the last comment I would make is that I think it's also fair to say that the vast majority of people who move to Simsbury do for, do so for the primary reason being of the school system, getting their kids into the school system. It's a great town in many other respects, but the primary reason why people agree to pay the higher tax rates in Simsbury is because they're getting one of the top-performing districts in the state. And I think it would be, it's always felt to me that it would be very short-sighted if we were to make budget cuts in some, and these are good examples, that would have the impact of effectively lowering the quality of the education system when that's, that's the reason people buy homes here. And it, and the quality of the education system underlies the values of the homes in, in town. So, I think if we reduced Simsbury's ranking to, say, the 10th-best school district in the state, I think we could expect realistically to be able to measure a decline in home values, significant decline in home values in Simsbury as a result. And that would be not doing our job in terms of representing the taxpayers in town. So, quality of education, being one of the top-performing districts, is a fundamental part of, of upholding home values in Simsbury, and I think this budget does that. So, my intent is to support it.
I, I intend to support it as well. I have watched over the years, the
I have watched over the years the cuts that we've made, and I've watched the technology cuts that have been particularly painful. I think that we've got an economy based on technology these days, and if we don't support our students learning as much as they can about it, and having hands-on opportunities to participate in it, that we're really going to be behind the eight ball very, very quickly. And I think we already somewhat are for the cuts we've made over the years. I think that's really important to keep in place. I think we have, do have a decline in enrollment, but as you have pointed out in previous meetings, we do not have a decline in special ed students. And that's something that, when you really look at the percentages of that, it's a responsibility we have. And every student, we are responsible to every student in this district, and I think that's part of why our district's so special. And it's good for every student, so I think we need to keep that in mind. But the mandates set to us by the state need to be recognized, need to be maintained, need to be addressed, and if we throw them at the teachers without any support, I think that the students are the ones that will suffer as well as our teaching staff, and none of that is good for any of us. So, I think that we, I think this is very responsible. I think cutting into any of our support staff is going to be very damaging to our students and their education, and I just hope we can go forward with what we've got.
Some further perspective on these charts the meeting started with. It's really pretty dramatic to look at these bar charts and to see how far to the right this particular proposal is. But I wonder if you can give that some context? In other words, how is it that we are at, how is it that these so many districts are going for, and even getting approved, much, much higher increases versus prior year? What's going on? I mean, these are pretty big numbers here to the left of our numbers. So, what's different about us compared to them this year, if you know?
I mean, I can't really speak to other districts' budgets and their proposals and what they're putting forth. I know we take great pains, and I mean this sincerely, to look at how we can take advantage of our decline in enrollment to reduce FTE and try to keep that balance of class size. So, while I am saying we didn't do it to the extent we did it last year, I don't want to underestimate the value that we're still reducing three full-time equivalent positions at the elementary school. Now, for that to work right, your projections need to be on the money, you need to make sure you don't have a variance there, because you're giving yourself less wiggle. So, you know, Tom, I think we have a real thorough process, and we look at all those areas, and we really try to work towards the end of putting forward great programming, solid support structures for not only our students but our staff, and at the same time, we take, you know, a great deal of understanding in how important it is to be fiscally responsible. So, we look through both those lenses.
Thank you.
That's a very diplomatic way to avoid criticizing your other superintendents. I love it, that was great. You should run for office. But I would, my response would be, Tom, that I think we've been fortunate enough to have great leadership in the district for a number of years. We've had great board members who've put a lot of time and effort into this and spent an enormous amount of time struggling with these issues. Six years of sub-2% budgets is really kind of probably a record, I would think, among school districts around the area. I think our school district overall has just historically been better managed, quite frankly. I think it's that simple.
Thank you.
And I think also in terms, when we talk about, just a few other things, and on the mandates, as you had mentioned before, Mike, about the new mandates. Now, we are telling the legislators up at the LOB and also Washington, I mean, we are done with no more new mandates. It's fund the mandates, the present existing mandates that have already been handed down to us. So, that is the next push that we have to, you know, talk with them and want them to hear. And Burke has always got those lists of mandates that come through.
But not a new push, right? I mean, the struggle that this board's been dealing with.
This is a struggle.
For as long as I've been in the district.
This is, the mandate situation is always a struggle with boards. It's the mandates that have been coming down, and a lot of the mandates, even now, we can't understand why they came down, the reason they came down, but the real question is how to fund the existing mandates that are already there. And I think in terms, when we talk about investment in education, and we as Board of Ed elected members here, you know, our jobs are to be advocates for public education, advocates for what's best for our students, what's best for our district. And that is something that is first and foremost why we get up every morning and we do this job, and, you know, we look at, take this very, very seriously. And I think not only in terms of, Mike had mentioned before, you know, about an attractive community and town to come and raise your children and have your children go to school here, I think it's also a place, a good place to work. I think this is a place that is very desirable, and as central office knows and principals know, in, upon interviewing, you know, potential staff, this is an area where people and staff and personnel want to be, want to come and work, want to be part of Simsbury Public Schools from pre-K to grade 12. And that says a lot for a district, very much, with phenomenal leadership that we have within our principals and administrative team, and building administrators and central office. It comes all the way down to, you know, cafeteria, to bus drivers, you know, to maintenance. So, that's also important.
Burke, you want to jump in? I did. I just wanted to relay the message on behalf of Board of Finance, because part of their agenda this evening, they were good enough to move things around, knowing that I was going to be up here before their meeting was over. One of their agenda items was looking for any budget guidelines for this budget year. And I think the short answer is, there's not a budget guideline, but there's a budget goal, and it goes back to the three-board meeting that we were part of at the beginning of the process, that they really are interested in trying to make sure that the mil rate does not increase or change. They're looking to have that goal. They brought up the mil rate worksheet, started to play with some of the variables. They feel, you know, they stressed that they really think there are some tools and some ways that we can all work to get to that goal. Some of the things that they highlighted, the finance directors looking at some ways of getting more interest income from assets, and they're also looking at the possibility of the grand list, and some of those numbers looking better as the process goes on farther. They're looking at the Internal Service Fund from the health insurance aspect, as we have already highlighted, but looking at some possibility of further use of that. They plugged in numbers for, you know, what did it look like at a 2.47 for the Board of Ed? They looked at what did a 1.7 look like? And they certainly, you know, recognized it was going to take multiple offsets to try to get to that goal. I think Mick Mason threw out some combinations that added up to about $1 million of offsets. And they certainly are, you know, looking for the Board of Ed to be part of that, but they're not saying there's a specific guideline, and they're certainly pointing out that they understand that there are exceptional circumstances, and that's what the purpose of that presentation will be on March 11th, when we explain it. So, whatever you do vote, I just wanted to give you that, they asked me to relay that clearer message, and I hope that's clear enough.
Burke, just to add some color to that, I've been hearing this 1.7 number now for a number of weeks. I don't know where it came from, and I don't know what the rationale is behind it, or what the logic is behind it. Do you have a sense for, what is this 1.7 number? Where did it come from, and why is it?
Cost of living.
It was a social security cost of living in our history binder. That's one of the many variables that's tracked over the 30 years.
That's what it is.
That was where the idea came from.
Has that metric been used historically?
I don't think it's been, I don't think it's been the consistent variable, no.
It hasn't been.
I think it's been looked at, but I don't think it's been the one thing that we've just, you know, tracked with, no.
Well, do you have any sense for why that number's being used this year, if it hasn't been used historically?
I would guess because it also helps, it's a number that helps them get closer to that 0% mil rate increase goal.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions?
In the spirit of sort of helping Tom understand, the other comment I would make about our district is, I think it's a very good question, is, you know, how do we do what we do? In the last 12 years, I guess, we've negotiated four sets of contracts, our contracts with our teachers every three years. And, you know, in balance, when you look at the outcome of those contracts, if you factor in increases in contributions to benefit programs, changes to benefit programs to allow us to introduce, for example, HSA to all new incoming employees, both the administrators' association and the teachers, the SCA, the Simsbury Education Association, have worked very fairly and very professionally with us over each of those contract negotiations. They're long, they go on for months, they last till 2:00 AM or 3:00 AM.
Four.
Four AM, I think it was, and we discuss and negotiate over a lot of different points. But at the end of it, I think we've walked out of those negotiations with shaking hands, with a great attitude, with everybody feeling like we came up with something that can work for all of us. And when you look at the comparatively low impact that contract negotiations have had on our budgets versus other towns, I think that's evidence that our two associations, the administrators and the teachers, have really been willing to kind of meet us in the middle and come up with a set of contracts that really work well for everybody. So, that's an important part of what's allowed us to have six years of sub-2% contracts. You know, you can see in our budget, 2/3 of the increase is increase in, contract increase in wages and benefits. So, you know, that's a big driver in our cost structure. Forty, roughly, $40 million out of the $68 is contract sentiments. So, being able to get, you know, not, being able to get terms that we can live with and that we think are going to give us the kind of control over our budget has been a fundamental part of those negotiations. Both the administrators and the teachers' association have been great at working with us to come up with a number everybody can live with. That's important, that shows up in here.
Thank you for that insight.
All righty. No further questions, comments, on anything? All right. We will have recommended motion.
A move that the Board of Education adopts the 2015-16 public school budget in the amount of $67,221,317, which represents an increase of $1,618,500, or 2.47%.
Thank you, Mike. Do I hear a second? Any further discussion?
I just want to say that I intend to abstain in this vote on the basis that I am new to the board and have not participated in either subcommittee discussions or discussions of the board meetings during the budget season, have only been able to observe them, but do wish to say that I'm feeling pretty good about the direction that this budget is taking, and look forward to a productive dialogue with the Board of Finance. But I don't feel that I can vote on this particular motion.
All right. Very good. Thank you for offering that. With that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention from Tom, and motion passes. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Burke, and Susan, and Aaron, and Matt, and of course, our building principals for their input.
Thank you for our principals who are here tonight to support the efforts. I appreciate them coming and listening to us once again.
Very good. All righty. We have another public audience, anyone wishing to address the audience? And thank you to both our students that are here, sitting in the audience all the time, and for coming, and we hope this is about as interesting to you as you. So, all right. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, March 10th, here in Board of Education Conference Room. And just a reminder that the Board of Ed budget presentation to the Board of Finance is March 11th, correct, Burke? We're still on target?
Wednesday.
At 6:00 PM downstairs in the Board of Selectmen Conference Room. So, I would like to also thank SCTV for continuously taping our board meetings here, and they will be on air throughout the week until the next board meeting. So, with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, we are adjourned. Thank you, and good night.